Good evening, good evening and welcome. We will have our Student Board Member Hannah Wells lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the Board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in the front at the Assistant Secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such time as the items can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to individual members of the Board or to the staff. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that the Board voted to approve a surety partial settlement and resolution agreement between the District and Western Surety involving construction at Browning High School. The agreement provides for certain payments and reservation of rights. The vote was four to oh with Members Williams, Benitez, Craighead, and Meyer participating in the vote. This is the time set aside for public hearings regarding the following: sufficiency of instructional materials. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item? If none, declare the hearing closed. Call for agenda items for separate action adoption of the agenda as posted.
Move approval.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Approval of minutes, October 2nd, 2019. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Public testimony on items listed on the agenda? We have none. Staff report? We have none. Public testimony on items not listed on the agenda? I do have a number of people who wish to speak today. We do have a limit of thirty minutes total for all discussion. So, for those of you who are not able to speak at this time, because of the time limit, you can leave your written information with the Assistant Secretary. The first speaker is Charles Song.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Felton Williams, Member of the Board, Superintendent Chris Steinhauser, and Executive Staffs. My name is Charles Song. I reside at 3312 Falcon Avenue in the city of Signal Hill. I'm a very active member of the Cambodian community and I also work and volunteer in the community. It's brought to my attention that the communication gap in Cambodian family is becoming wider and the relationship between parents, grandparents, and the kids are no longer close and solid. Our young generation in general is starting to lose their sense of identity and loss of language produces weakened social cohesion because values and traditions are replaced by new ones. The misunderstanding among family members oftentimes leads to frustration and stress. As a result, the relationship gap is becoming wider and wider. Second, with no language skills, they have no opportunity to learn about the rich history of their country and appreciate their own Khmer culture that was glorious over thousands years ago. I am saddened to see many college students who graduate with college degrees and are willing to work in local community agency to serve their own peoples. However, they are forced to seek employment where English skills are needed, hurting our local economy. As a parent, I have grave concern on this serious issue. I submit my request to this Board to consider implementing a Khmer dual-language immersion program in the Language Unified School District. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening and thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Chumriyap Suo, Board President, Dr. Felton Williams, Member of the Board, Superintendent Chris Steinhauser, and Executive Member. My name is Sophia Chin. I live at 2028 East Seventeenth Street, Long Beach, California, 90804. I'm the mother of three young children. My oldest is in Viria Elementary School. My second child will be in preschool next year. I'm very pleased that they will attend Viria Elementary School. However, I am concerned that my children and the other Khmer children are losing their language and their identity. Language and culture are tied together. Therefore, it is very important to teach my language in their school along with English. With the Khmer dual-language immersion program, my children will not only keep their language and culture, they will become more successful. Research so that the language program eliminate the achievement gap and improve student social and intellectual development. I am fluent in the Khmer language and I am a volunteer teacher assistant for Khmer tutoring after-school program at Viria Elementary School run by Ms. Chan Hopson. I hold Master Degree in Human Resource Management and I am working to get into the teaching credential program to teach my subject. It is my hope to see children become bilateral after graduating from high school so they can compete in the global job market. I would like them to succeed and with strong connection to their root and know the history of their country. I ask Board to implement the Khmer dual-language immersion program in Long Beach Unified School District for our young children in Long Beach. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening, President, Dr. Felton Williams, Member of the Board, Superintendent Chris Steinhauser, and Executive Board. My name is Kien Phong. I live at 1848 Lemon Avenue, Long Beach, California, 90806. I am a proud parent of four. I fled Cambodian genocide at age nine. I barely knew how to read Khmer and was not able to continue to learn Khmer language because while I was growing up, there were no Khmer language offer in school. I am today requesting the opportunity for the children, the opportunity that I never had when I was young. That is to implement Khmer dual-language immersion program into Long Beach Unified School District. It will be priceless for me to see my children be fluent in Khmer and in English. Also, it will be historical to see Long Beach Unified School District to be the first in the nation to have Khmer dual-language immersion. According to National Geographic article by Russ Reimer titled "Vanishing Voices," one language every fourteen days disappear. By the next century, nearly half of the roughly seven thousand languages spoken on earth will likely disappear. Please do not let this statement become a true statement for the largest Khmer community outside of Cambodia. Please give us a chance to keep our language and culture that are a part of our rich heritage from our ancestors. Also, it is a great way to show my children and all Khmer children that America is a great nation of melting pot. Thank you for your time and from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Stewart. Michael Stewart.
This is my first time at the Board. I'm a parent of two Long Beach students. I'm a resident of Belmont Heights, past president of Belmont Heights Community Association. I've lived in the community for twenty-plus years. I live across the street from my great-grandfather's house. I know Long Beach. I'm here with a few other parents. We recently became aware that Fremont was being closed along with a bunch of other schools and when I say closed, I mean gated off. It is the only park in Belmont Heights. It was the only place my kids could play. I have a daughter in Wilson who is learning lacrosse right now. She was using it, the Board, to practice. It's a gathering place. We're here to ask that it is left open after hours. We're not asking for money. It should be really easy to allow the community to have access to public land. And that's what we're here asking for. We're a group of about two hundred and forty parents, I just became aware. That's in about two weeks. We've just recently started organizing. We're going to continue to organize. We'd really like you to consider how we can work out something so that the school can remain a public place for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Superintendent, were we still planning to get some kind of update on November 6th meeting? Okay, thank you.
Greetings and good evening, Board President, Dr. Felton Williams, Members of the Board, Superintendent Chris Steinhauser, and Executive Staff. My name is Gary Forson. I've lived at 185 St. Joseph Avenue here in Long Beach since 1983, over thirty-five years. As my interest in the Cambodian language has increased over the last fifteen years, I've spent more and more time mingling and immersing in the Cambodian community, taking various classes at Mark Twain Library or Long Beach City College, to spending time with Cambodian friends which I've made along the way. Especially while sitting in Khmer beginner classes, I can't help but notice what limited Khmer skills most of the younger generation Cambodians possess. While talking with many younger and middle-school-aged Cambodians, most seem to share with me that they understand, to an extent, the interactions between them and their parents, but their ability to talk in depth is quite lacking. One- or two-word responses in Khmer seem to be the norm. I wonder what kind of communications and interactions have been shortened, misunderstood, or haven't been shared at all because of a language barrier between parents, grandparents, and children. Cultural and historical exchanges and conversations that may contribute to enrich a child's identity as they become adults. They even lack knowledge of geography and history of Cambodia. With Long Beach having the largest Cambodian population outside of Cambodia, it seems only right to have Khmer curriculum in the Long Beach schools. As I personally witnessed the Cambodian community become more prosperous over the years, having the new generations working in the community with Khmer language skills as lawyers, doctors, and other professions can only contribute more to the Long Beach community as a whole. Please, let's be the first unified school district in the nation to implement the Khmer dual-language immersion program for the Khmer children in Long Beach. Let's make history together. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Forgive me if I mispronounced this name. Is it Jyorin Nonoa? J-Y-O-R? J-Y-O-T?
Oh, it is me. It's Jothi. That's my handwriting, I'm sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
Terrible handwriting. And I'm a teacher too, so I should know better. I'm sorry. My name is Jothi Nanda. I'm here representing parents. I ask the parents to stand up here with me because along with Michael Stewart, we're here representing parents from Fremont School on behalf of Save Our Fremont Playground. So hello to all the respected Board members, Superintendent Steinhauser, and the Executive Board. As you may know, this issue has really galvanized our community in just two and a half weeks. As Michael Stewart stated, we now have two hundred and forty Board members of our Facebook page and it's growing every day, literally every minute. About two and a half weeks ago when we got the notice, we ended up doing a peaceful protest that our kids help us organize. As a result of that, we've since had a Long Beach Post article, the LA Times has reported a front-page article in the California section, Steve Lopez ran a column last week in the LA Times, and you may have seen it last night, but Channel 7 Local News, Rachel Jordan did a community report on it as well. I think the reason that this has galvanized the community and we're starting to hear calls from all over Long Beach, we're starting to hear calls from outside of Long Beach, we have parents up here whose children aren't even in our school, who have come to us to say we want to help and we want to support, is because this issue is bigger than even Fremont. This is really an issue of equity. This is really an issue of open space for our children. It's really an issue of safety. I'm here to just tell you that in addition to all of the work that we've been doing, we've met, we've spoken at Long Beach City Council. I received an email this morning from the Chief of Staff of the Mayor's Office. We have plans to meet with the Mayor's Office, with our Councilmember Susie Price's office. We're willing to meet with anyone who wants to work with us and that's really primarily why we came today, was to show our continued support, tell you where we were at, and ask you to once again, like I said when I spoke two weeks ago, to have Long Beach really be the leader on this. I mean, the reason why we're all here is because we love Long Beach. The reason all of our children are in Long Beach Public Schools and in Fremont is because we love Long Beach Unified School District. And everybody is looking to Long Beach to be the leader. We sent letters out that some of you may be getting this afternoon. We're circulating these letters with their talking points and in the last few minutes I have, I'm going to read to you our primary talking points. By way of background, on Tuesday, September 24th, Fremont families received a flyer in children's backpacks giving notice of an imminent change. Fremont will become a completely closed campus within one week. This was the first such notice that was sent home after the school. And again, this was two and a half weeks ago. Closing the playground at Fremont will create an outdoor recreation vacuum that other schools in the district currently suffer. This is an issue of equity and we're starting to do park research as well and our area is actually park poor. Research suggests locking schools do not prevent vandalism or violence and may create more problems by isolating neighbors from one another and weakening community ties. And lastly, and probably most important to the Board, we recognize the significant cost and liability concerns facing Long Beach Unified School District and are prepared to work together toward a solution that promises equitable access to school playgrounds in underdeserved neighborhoods. We propose a pilot program serving selected schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much and I do apologize for butchering that name.
That's okay.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Felton Williams, Members of the Board, Superintendent Chris Steinhauser, and Executive Staff. My name is Harold Nye and I live at 3535 East Tenth Street here in Long Beach. I'm Vice President of the Cambodian Student Society at CSU Long Beach. I have a good understanding of Khmer to a conversational level. That skill level happens to be the exception when it comes to other Khmer students. During the first CSS meeting, we had our introductions to each other in Khmer. Most of the new members were freshmen and the icebreaker was a typical greeting in Khmer. Chumriyap Suo, Kyom Chmua, and their name. Most of these students, freshmen and upperclassmen, became anxious when it was their turn to speak because they did not have the confidence in their Khmer abilities. And they lacked skill speaking in groups altogether. They grew up speaking English and did not have the opportunity to learn their Khmer language. Furthermore, their lack of Khmer language skills made it difficult to communicate with their parents, so their social skills that they should have learned at home were lacking. Therefore, the implementation of the Khmer dual-language immersion in the Long Beach Unified School District is extremely important to keep communication channels between parents and their children open. I strongly believe our young generation will benefit a lot from having Khmer language skills at an early age so they can make more research in-depth about the rich heritage of their history, civilization, literature, culture, and arts that define who they are. The loss of their language will also include the loss of an opportunity to improve the economic development locally and internationally. The loss of the language will lead to the loss of the next generation in the Khmer community. Thank you for hearing me this evening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Superintendent, I believe we have a dual immersion update in December. Am I correct about that? Can we include a consideration of Khmer programming curricularly as part of that dual immersion update, please?
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Chet Davidson, California School Employees Association, Vice President, Unit B. Last time I came up and I spoke to you folks, I just kind of gave you an update through our negotiations, if you haven't heard, which I'm sure you have. We have come to a tentative agreement as of Monday. Just very difficult situation for us as a negotiating team. We have twenty-three hundred District employees and their families that are dependent on the decisions of the terms of agreements that we come to. Our two percent raise that we were negotiating for was contingent on healthcare costs to our part-time employees. And that was a very difficult situation. We have fourteen people on our negotiating team and from a very diverse crowd of people and job classifications, there was a lot of different personalities and really heartfelt moments in that room trying to figure out what would be the fairest and best solution. The proposal that the District had implemented or proposed to our negotiating team was just completely unacceptable and completely unaffordable to our people and something that we could not leave the room in agreement with. So, after eight months of long talks and thick binders of papers, we ended up having an informal mediator come into the room. He came in from Northern California and was very helpful to end our discussions and to come to a final tentative agreement. So, it's a bittersweet moment. Of course, our membership will make the final decision through our ratification. We cannot discuss any disclosure of these details until our Field Director through California School Employees Association reviews this, but I just wanted to express it was very difficult and very meaningful to know that the decisions made in that room are just going to affect people and their careers here for their entirety. We want to avoid impasse. Upon approval of the ratification, we can move forward, but if the membership votes otherwise, then we're back at the table. It was just very difficult and I'm hoping for the best that this works out for our membership. Thank you.
Thank you, Chet, for your remarks. Vanderlin Vong.
Hi, I know we have a thirty-minute cutoff, so I would like Dr. Bryant to speak.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Felton Williams, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Chris Steinhauser, Executive Cabinet and Staff. My name is Dr. Renee Bryant. I serve as the Director of English-Learning Multilingual Services for Anaheim Union High School District, where we offer eight different world languages, two Spanish Dual-Language Immersion Programs, and the first secondary dual-language immersion in Vietnamese in the United States. Before working at Anaheim Union High School District, I worked for Westminster School District, where we implemented the first Vietnamese Dual-Language Immersion Program in the state of California. And that's where I first met Chan Hopson when she came to visit our program back in 2015, talking way back then, four years ago, about the possibility of implementing dual-language immersion, Khmer dual-language immersion here in Long Beach Unified School District. I'm here tonight, obviously, to support the Khmer students and families that are here, asking you, under the new regulations and policies of Prop 58, to consider the implementation of Khmer dual-language immersion. Like Vietnamese to Westminster, Khmer is a critical language in Long Beach. As your third-most spoken language here in the District, Khmer is critical to local families, businesses, and the community of Long Beach and Southern California. Implementing Khmer dual-language immersion will not only give equal access, equity, and opportunity to Khmer English learners like you have for Spanish-speaking English learners, it will have the academic benefits that we know from dual-language immersion, that you know from your own Spanish Dual-Language Immersion Programs, but also help to prepare a workforce of Khmer speakers to serve in Long Beach and the community such as doctors, lawyers, teachers, and interpreters, and more. In these times of declining enrollment, many school districts are looking for innovative programs to help increase their enrollment. And they want to retain their students while attracting other students from other districts. As the first possible Khmer dual-language immersion in California, you would be a destination district for this language, for your students here, as well as all over Southern California. When we first implemented Vietnamese Dual-Language Immersion at Westminster, many people said it couldn't be done. They said we'd be lucky if we got fifteen students in a class. Happy to report that very first year, we filled up two kindergarten classes of Vietnamese Dual-Language Immersion. The second year, we filled up three classes of kindergarten dual-language immersion. The third year, three classes of kindergarten dual-language immersion. And in the third year of implementation, we were awarded the California School Board Association Golden Bell for our implementation of Vietnamese Dual-Language Immersion. So, with that, now in Anaheim Union High School District, we also did the impossible. People said there's no way you can implement a secondary Vietnamese Dual-Language Immersion program without having a Vietnamese elementary school program to feed into it, but we did it. We tested heritage speakers into the program. We have thirty students in our program now and have very little time, so thank you for your consideration of implementing Khmer dual-language immersion. We know that increased enrollment equals increased average daily attendance dollars, which I'm sure your district needs, like all other districts, and I know this would be an innovative program that all families, Khmer families and other families all around Southern California would be excited to join. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Members of the Board. I'm Natalie Tran, faculty in the Department of Secondary Education at Cal State Fullerton and also the Director of the National Resource Center for Asian Languages. We support five languages, Vietnamese, Chinese, Korean, Japanese, and our latest addition is the Khmer. is the Khmai language to our center. I want to speak a little bit about the student achievement piece. As you know, research across the Board regarding dual-language immersion programs has demonstrated over and over again that having a dual-language program can increase student achievement. Now, your question may be, but what about those less commonly taught languages like Khmai, like Vietnamese, like Korean, that we know very little about? I'm happy to share that, based on our research with the Vietnamese Dual Language Immersion Program at Westminster that Dr. Bryant has just mentioned, we have shown very positive results. Peers, students who enroll in the Vietnamese Dual Program are performing at the level, if not better than their peers, than their peers in the non-Viet program. Also, we have shown soon increase in identity development, connection with the parents, motivation to learn both English and their heritage language. I'm going to touch a little bit on the curriculum and the teacher shortages. Sorry, running out of breath. At Cal State Fullerton, we provide support for bilingual authorization and teacher pathway for Vietnamese, Korean, Spanish, and we're looking forward to developing potentially a pathway for Khmai as well. All of that is to say, this is not impossible. There will be hard work, but we rely on the community for support, looking at our community heritage language schools for resources, and being able to provide those types of support. One last thing that I do want to mention is that for the next four years, the National Resource Center for Asian Languages are committed to working with the Khmai community on a community literacy project, and that is to work with parents and students to create resources to support the Khmai community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Dr. Renee Bryant. Mark Hopson.
Good evening, Board President Dr. Felton Williams, members of the Board, Superintendent Chris Steinhauser, and executive staff. Okay, my name is Mark Hopson, 1069 Cerritos Avenue in Long Beach, 90813. I'm going to read a letter from Shannon Villanueva. She unfortunately couldn't be here, so I'm just going to read her letter. Okay. My name is Shannon Villanueva. I am the proud principal of DeMille Elementary School in the Westminster School District, which is the home to the first Vietnamese Dual Language Immersion Program in the state of California. We are very proud of our Vietnamese Dual Language Immersion Program and the positive impact it has had on our school district, community, and community. The VDLI program started as a dream, a lofty idea, a challenge. In the fall of 2014, WSD accepted that challenge and began the journey to make the dream a reality. We had tremendous support from the school board and district administration. Under the leadership of Dr. Renee Bryant and in collaboration with our university partner at NorCal, Dr. Natalie Tran, plans for implementing the Vietnamese Dual DLI program were set in motion. After nine short months of planning, we opened two kindergarten VDLI students with approximately 40 students in the fall of 2015. Today, only four years later, we have 15 VDLI classes, preschool through fourth grade, with over 300 students. In this era of declining enrollment across the state, and the enrollment at DeMille continues to grow, the VDLI program has retained their own students, as well as attracted students from across the district. We have also experienced an increase in inter-district transfers. DeMille now has students coming from Corona, Yorba Linda, Costa Mesa, Garden Grove, Fountain Valley, Tustin, and even Long Beach. The VDLI program has transformed our school and our community. We have had a tremendous increase in parent involvement and engagement. We have built and maintained wonderful relationships and partnerships with our local community and universities and neighboring school districts. These partnerships and collaboration with the larger community continue to grow as our program grows. Our students in the VDLI program are doing very well. They are on the pathway to bilingual literacy, and they are demonstrating competency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking in Vietnamese and English. They have had numerous opportunities to participate in school-wide and community events and increasing their sociocultural competence. Students in the VDLI program are also excelling academically. The third graders took the SBAC for the first time last spring. These students outscored their monolingual peers. In ELA, 93% of the VDLI students met or exceeded standard, with the majority scoring standard exceeded. In math, 84% of the VDLI students met or exceeded standard, with the majority scoring standard exceeded. And one more paragraph, and I'll stop here. And there's a copy in your information folders. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Passing the baton, huh?
Chumriyup Suo. Good evening, Board President Dr. Felton Williams, Member of the Board, Superintendent Chris Steinhauser, and the Executive Staff. As you know, my name is Chan Hopson. I'm the resident of Long Beach since 1980. My address is 1069 Cerritos Avenue, Long Beach, California, 90813. You know that the Khmai dual-language and the culture intertwined, and for all these 40 years, I noticed that we have art, we have dancing, we have everything in the Cambodian community, but all children have no idea what it meant. They did not know how the classical dancing performed, what it meant, because they don't know. They did not read the language, so they cannot read the meaning of the dancing. They just see the hand moving, and it just looks beautiful, but they didn't know that every finger that they move means something. Represent the culture, represent the heritage, represent the literature, represent the civilization that was won before during the Khmai Empire was so glorious. So that's why the parent and everybody that come here to speak to the Board, please implement the Khmai dual-language for all children, so they don't get lost. And we cannot afford to wait for another 40 years. So under Prop 58, we have used the signature that I needed, and we are formally requesting you to investigate the implementation of this program. And the contact information can be myself, my phone number, and email, and Sophie Chum, the parent of Viria, that will be the phone number and email that I enclose in each pocket for the Board member and the superintendent. We would like you to adjourn the request to address this at the next meeting. Thank you very much for hearing us today.
Thank you, Chan. We have, I've got two requests, but time for, okay, Russell Johnson.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board of Education. My name is Russell Johnson. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Associated Builders and Contractors. I have a letter to read into the record. We invite you also to tour one of our training facilities. We have one in Anaheim and one in Los Angeles, in our San Fernando office. So on behalf of the Associated Builders and Contractors, we're writing about project labor agreements. They must be inclusive of contractors, workers, and apprentices. We are writing on behalf of the nearly 400-member companies and over 700 apprentices that are currently enrolled in our state-approved apprenticeship programs to express our concerns about the proposed project labor agreement your district is working on. PLAs have four major problems that will discourage many contractors from working on Long Beach Unified School District construction projects. And I will add, this is not in the letter, that you could potentially lose existing contractors that are working for you now. The first issue is the restriction on the use of contractors' core workforce. All PLAs put a limit on contractors utilizing their own employees to work on a job. The rest of the workers then are dispatched from a union hall, meaning an employer must agree to employ a workforce they are unfamiliar with, and they may not be used to the safety protocols and procedures of that contractor. Second, it's a requirement of the contractor's core workforce must be registered through the union hall. This means that a contractor cannot continue to pay into their employees' existing health and benefit plans. For example, if an employee is on a job for three months, they may not qualify for entrance into the union plan. As such, the employer is forced to keep the employee's current plan active. Furthermore, the core workforce is harmed because the retirement is impacted. Most contractors provide retirement plans for their employees that is already vested in since day one, while under a PLA, a worker may only be on a job for three months and lose those months of retirement contributions because they are not vested in the union plan. Most importantly, discrimination against apprentices is one of the most egregious problems with PLAs. There are many apprenticeship programs that are approved by the state. PLA specifically prevent apprentices from programs like ABCs from working on Long Beach Unified Jobs. Furthermore, this prevents these apprentices, even local Long Beach apprentices, from earning their state-required on-the-job training hours. Your district wouldn't discriminate against students, and we do not feel it is your intent to discriminate against the apprentices we train. Last, PLAs raise costs as they complicate the construction process and reduce your bidder pool. I'll let you read the rest of the latter, as my time is running near. We would just invite each of the Board members that we'd like to sit down with you, explain our perspective in greater detail, and hopefully find common ground, so the district can achieve its goals without a PLA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We are out of time, and I do have one other, one more request. If that individual, Mr. Schultz, can leave your comments with the Board Secretary, because we are out of time on public comments. Business items, personnel, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the Superintendent. Classified and exempt personnel, appointments 70, leaves of absence 4, abandonment of position 3, termination of service 1, resignations 18, retirements 7, abolishments, lack of workforce or funds 1, amendments 2. Certificated personnel, appointments 16, in-service changes 14, leaves of absence 3, retirements 1, and I move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Instruction.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. We have an EDFI implementation grant proposal that we're being asked to approve. I'd love to hear a little bit more, Ms. Seki, about EDFI, and, you know, if we can talk a little bit about what process we currently use to track progress with our English learners, I think we can highlight the importance of what this grant would provide our district.
Thank you for your question, Board Member. This is a data governance and dissemination grant, in that the goal of the grant is to strengthen data integrity by aligning data sources. Dissemination is that we will share our learnings with other EDFI districts. We have chosen our English learner tracking and monitoring as the product that will come out of the work that the research office will be leading. We currently have several methods digitally of tracking our English learners' progress. We recognize that being able to do that in a more elegant and efficient way through a single source, that will be able to call data, allow us to do predictive analytics, to get a more global view of our English learners, will really align and advance the work of our English learner initiative. So this is an example of where we can leverage one grant around data integrity to also address an important issue in our district, which is our English learner progress monitoring.
Yeah, I'm super happy to hear that, since our EL initiative, you know, has this as a priority, right? Evidence-based. So when I ask questions around, well, how do we keep doing more of what works?
Exactly.
This would allow us to identify.
Yes.
Those things. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out item number seven, again, thanking our parents and community members who are stepping up to be involved as voting members in the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. So we have another eight folks who are stepping up to a really phenomenal group of people. Oh, wait, there's more on the back, so maybe it's 11. So again, thank you to those parents and community members who say yes to that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance Report A.
Move approval.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance Report B.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm recusing myself from participation in Finance Report B and Purchasing and Contract Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payee.
So that's Finance Report B and Purchasing Report B.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved 4-0 with one recusal. Get that right, Brent? Okay. Business report, business department report.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Purchasing Report, I'm sorry, Purchasing and Contract Report A.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I have a question. I think it's on this part, on the online auction. I'm wondering what kinds of things are available online?
So we intend to utilize this for vehicles and equipment that are beyond the useful life, but that can still provide some value for the district. So vehicles and equipment.
And do we also have, or maybe I should say it this way, what do we do with other surplus materials, like, say, furniture, desks, and bookshelves, that type of thing?
If they can provide, if they can provide some value for the district, we can use an online platform such as this. If it can't provide any value for the district, it would be salvaged out.
Okay, but these things would not be available to the public at all?
It would need to go through an online platform such as this, such as this auctioning platform.
Okay, because I know we used to have a place at the maintenance yard, or was it the maintenance yard or warehouse on Market?
Yes, yeah, and sites are encouraged to, if they are in need of furniture and equipment to come and look at our yard to see if there's anything that can be of use to them. But for the public, it would need to go through this type of platform in order to purchase it from the district.
Because sometimes on school campuses, I see furniture that's been piled up. So we can, we have a place to put that surplus furniture.
Yes.
And then maybe repurposed somewhere else.
Yes.
So things will stay out of the landfill and be used.
Yes, definitely.
I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Purchasing and Contract Reports B.
I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved. Four votes to, and one recusal. Okay. Other items, Superintendent items, student discipline.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the Board, staff's recommending the expulsion of the following student, Student 396. This student would be expelled under Education Codes 48915C3 and would not be eligible to apply for re-admission until after the June 2020 semester. However, staff is recommending a suspended expulsion.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Administrative assignments.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the Board, staff recommends the following assignments to be effective on the dates indicated. Raquel Welch-Kitching, who is currently Assistant Principal of Marshall to the Acting Principal at Marshall, and Monica Daly, a retired principal to the Acting Principal at Jefferson.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, Resolution 101619-A, supporting National Principals Month.
Move approval.
Second. Discussion. Thank you to our principals. Amen. Much appreciated. Amen. Where are they?
They're busy. They're working.
They're working.
Right. Answering emails. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Approval of reappointment of members to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion?
I just want to say thank you to these three. I know that these are re-upping their, their commitment to the, to the committee, so thank you for saying yes again.
Are any of those folks here tonight?
I don't believe they are.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is approved unanimously. Resolution 101619-B, Williams textbook sufficiency?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, so we oftentimes, you know, get asked by parents about textbooks and textbooks going home and staying in the classroom. Had a long conversation with Maseki today to sort of walk me through the process, and I think it would be valuable for our students, parents, and community members to have a sense of what our district goes through, to make sure that every student has a textbook that they, she or he could take home with them and, and sort of the, the nature of where this comes from.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide some insight into this process. The resolution that is before you represents the final step in what we call our Williams Audit. It's actually a resolution of sufficiency of instructional materials. This process is mandated under legislation that was a result of a lawsuit and...
Not to us, right? The lawsuit wasn't about us.
No, this is a Northern California district. Now this legislation applies to every district in the state of California. So each year, within the first four weeks of school, as a district, we must certify that every student, grades K through 12, has instructional materials in English Language Arts, English Language Development, Mathematics, History, Social Science, and Science, and then at the secondary level, Health and World Languages, and at the high school level, it also includes science equipment. The legislation requires that the student have his or her own copy of the instructional materials and is able to take them home at the student's discretion. For us, those are physical textbooks because a digital adoption of a textbook would require that we would certify that every student in the district had access to Wi-Fi at home as well as a device. The mechanics of this audit take place in the following ways. For what we call a non-site visit, those are the majority of our schools, we work with the principals, they have the same list that is attached in the board agenda right now of all our approved instructional materials, and the principals conduct internal audits with each of their teachers, and they certify that all students have a one-to-one correspondence textbook in the following textbook areas. We have approximately one-sixth of our schools that are identified as visit schools. They were identified over a decade ago under old assessment measures. Because the legislation has not been updated, those schools continue every year to be identified as a visit school. By visit, I mean that it's an onsite audit by a team from our county office that comes into the school site, visits the classrooms, and asks the students to physically show them their textbooks. They will check to make sure that it is a one-to-one correspondence, that we're not using a class set, that each student has his or her own materials, and then we'll ask the students if they're able to take those materials home. At the conclusion of that four weeks, we then have our resolution to present for you that we have done that rigorous audit, and we have successfully certified that every student in those subject areas has his or her own instructional materials.
Thank you, Maseki. I think a couple of items that I think are important to me that I would love to engage our board and executive staff on are this, this notion, right, that we're moving to, that we've moved to a digital platform, and, you know, that we're still sort of relying on a somewhat antiquated way of surveying and auditing whether each student has a book or books, right? And so I think it highlights the importance of a couple of things for me. One is the need for our families and households to have access to Wi-Fi, right? That if we're going to think about additional ways to make sure that our resources and curriculum is accessible, not just in our classroom, not just using a traditional hard book, that we also need to look at, and I know that our district is doing this, making sure that we reconcile our digital divide in particular households in Long Beach. At the same time, you know, I know that our superintendent has, has planned out students being able to take some of those Chromebooks home, all right? So this brings up, okay, for, for sending Chromebooks home, then, you know, we need to be cognizant that unless we can download some of these materials as PDFs on the Chromebook, there's a ton of other resources that require, again, access, and most of our families are using this as their access. So I'd love for us to be able to have a more robust conversation about this, as to how, what we're doing as a district, given that the audit survey process here, although we are awesome at doing it, it does require a lot of work. A lot of time goes into it when potentially we could be using that time, that effort, those resources in more efficient ways. And so part of it is, yes, out of compliance, we have to do it, so I applaud all the work that you and your staff do. But the other part of it is, I think this does require for us to do some thinking around, you know, we're moved to this digital age, and we're still counting one-to-one textbooks, how does that impact those families that don't as easily access or aren't able to access some of the digital and online resources that we have? So thank you, Maseki, for that. So again, I think this resolution just highlights a couple of important things that I know we're doing good work in, our district does, to reconcile this, but I think, you know, I would recommend that in one of our upcoming agendas that we are able to have a more robust conversation about that thing.
Pam, may I ask, you mentioned class sets in, for example, history classes where the textbooks are ponderous. Do we provide a class set for all those teachers in their classroom as well as one issued to the student?
So our minimum requirement is to provide one for every student. A number of sites will opt to use their local control money to buy a class set to be used as well, but that's not a requirement.
Thank you.
Chris, as a follow-up to Dr. Banita's just discussion, can we look at the upcoming board workshop to get more information on? Okay. All right, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. We are now at report of board members. Start with our student board member, Hannah from Renaissance.
Good evening, Superintendent Steinhauser, board members and staff. I'm Hannah Wells, Student Council President at Renaissance High School for the Arts. A lot has been going on in our school since the last time you heard from our ASB president, Oliver Nieto. Last spring, we closed the year off with the LGBTQ+ Pride Dance in May. This was a great opportunity for the people in our school who are in the community, feel included and celebrated for being who they are. In June, we had a night in Paris prom at the Reef, which was wonderful. Prom is unique at our school because it is one of the biggest events ASB hosts besides Halloween and Open House. Additionally, prom is open to all grade levels. Having prom at the Reef was beautiful because it looked out on downtown Long Beach, and we're excited to have prom there again this year. Over the summer, RHSA Student Council was invited to an interactive ASB building, team building camp at Irvine Outdoor Recreational Center, along with Student Council students from Milliken, Lakewood, and McBride High Schools. This was a great collaborative and productive experience for us because we got to network, hang out with other diverse student councils, share best practices, and learn important life skills that we can bring back to our larger student body in an effort to foster a positive school climate. At the beginning of the year, Student Council had a welcome-back dance to excite the student body about the new school year. It's also a great way to introduce the incoming freshmen into our school culture in a fun and positive atmosphere. In an attempt to maintain a positive sense of community on campus, we have voted to hold two semi-formal dances this winter. In December, before winter break, RHSA is hosting a masquerade dance in our new Performing Arts Theater, and in February, we're having a Valentine's Dance. Unlike the majority of LBUSD high schools, Renaissance doesn't have traditional sports teams, and we don't have homecoming. To make up for this loss, we love having dances throughout the year to raise spirit in the student body. We've had great turnouts in the past, and I'm excited to have them again this year. After, oh, in addition to our inclusive school dances on campus, we plan, organize, and executed Future Fest 2019. Future Fest is Renaissance's unique college fair that takes place after the SAT/PSAT, and actually took place earlier today. The event was a huge success with a large turnout of both community members and college career representatives. After four hours of intense standardized testing, students' brains need a break. Rather than force students to return to academic classes feeling drained and fatigued, our student-led clubs set up booths to fundraise next to college representatives. Grow Up Club, which is a national organization, put on a thrifting booth. They had people donate clothes, and at Future Fest, students and staff could then take those clothes. Any clothing items that were not picked up by students will be donated to women's shelter. In the past, it has been difficult for colleges and universities to visit Renaissance because we are relatively small high school. Recruiters are primarily interested in schools with a larger student body. However, this year, we have a new college career advisor from USC, Mr. Jesse Cruz, and he has been working on outreach to universities since school began in August to attend Future Fest. We had more colleges and recruiters than we've ever had. In addition, we have college representatives stop by our College Career Center on campus that was recently renovated from a grant that our previous college career advisor, Ms. Tony, received. With that money, we transformed what was essentially a computer lab into a contemporary college counseling environment with new furniture, college memorabilia, and hanging banner that highlights RHSA's sixth pathways. We also have an installation that features an artist from each of our arts pathways highlighting where they attend college. Another fun and inclusive activity, which probably gets the most participation from students and staff alike, is our annual Halloween Fest. As I mentioned previously, we don't have homecoming, homecoming prep rallies, rivalries, or other school spirit activities relating to homecoming. We do, however, have Halloween Fest, which is one of the most fun, creative, comprehensive, and cooperative activities of the school year. All of our students are encouraged to participate in Halloween Spirit Week, which includes diversified and original dress-up days and eccentric lunch activities the week of Halloween, and culminates with Halloween Fest. Students and staff from all of our artistic pathways participate, which makes the event even more enjoyable and riveting because students get to see their teachers going all out with their costumes and provide an opportunity to see them as creative and dynamic individuals. Moreover, students are given the opportunity to express themselves by performing songs, reading poetry, singing vocal music solos, acting out scenes from their favorite Edgar Allan poems, and flash mobs where 150-plus dance students break out into a choreographed thriller dance in the quad. Our costume design pathway holds their annual costume contest with several categories, and every contestant receiving a participation prize. This year, our stage crew pathway is creating a haunted maze, which will give Not Scary Farm and Universal Studios Halloween Horror Nights a run for their money. Additionally, students participated in the nationally-recognized holiday, National Voter Registration Day, on September 24th to register and preregister to vote. Sixteen and seventeen-year-old 11th graders were given the opportunity to preregister in Mr. Tran's 11th Grade English Language Arts and AP English Language classes. And 17 and 18-year-old 12th graders were given the opportunity to register in Mr. Burns' US Government and AP Government classes. Through this initiative, 100% of eligible RHSA students were given the opportunity to register and preregister in order to develop political efficiency, increase voter turnout, and produce lifelong voters. Something else our school continues to do is giving students the opportunity to go to California Conference for Equality and Justice Building Bridges Camp. Ten RHSA students are looking forward to going up to the CCEJ Camp November 8th, 9th, and 10th. Our students have been participating in Building Bridges Camps for over 20 years, even before Renaissance was a visual and performing arts school. This unique three-day human relations is open to all RHSA students who are interested in social issues. The upcoming discussion, specifically on gender justice, and students are looking forward to collaborating, collaborating with youth from other campuses to work towards creating a more just and equality society. In addition to these great events and opportunities I've mentioned, RHSA just published an amazing promotional video about our school. It features students, teachers, and staff talking about the unique and positive culture of our school. It also shows off our beautiful new campus. Along with that, the most previous Meet the Mayor meeting was held at our state-of-the-art theater. Mayor Robert Garcia was there this past Sunday, October 13th, from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. This casual meeting with the 28th Mayor of Long Beach was open to all and provides updates about what's happening in Long Beach, including local projects, the city budget, and other issues. This is another great way to show the public our new campus. Lastly, I want to talk about the new faces at Renaissance. As a small school, students really form positive relationships with our staff because in a way, we're like family. Our teachers and staff really care about the students. We only have one campus security officer, and this year, we got a new CSO, Rita, after our veteran CSO, Miguel, was transferred without warning over the summer. He was and is a huge part of Renaissance, so is recent academic and artistic success, and many students and staff didn't even have the opportunity to say goodbye. This transition hasn't been easy because although Rita has been a great addition to the Renaissance family, Miguel was a huge part of our community at Renaissance and has built a rapport with students, staff, parents, and community members around our campus. He was above and beyond his job to make sure kids not only felt safe at school but had the resources they needed to be successful. It definitely affected our school's morale as we lost a great mentor and ally. We also welcomed our new principal, Mr. Navia, and assistant principal, Mr. Jimenez, and they are adjusting well to Renaissance. Personally, from a student's perspective, I really enjoy the spirit Mr. Navia has at our school. Ever since he's came, he's been open to all of ASB's ideas, and I think he's a good fit for our school. Something he's added to improve the overall culture of our school is Student of the Month, which is a great opportunity for students to get recognized for their grades, conduct, or overall improving, and Feast with the Family, which is a time for parents to come on campus at lunch to eat with their students. This is a great time to include parents more in the involvement of RHSA. Speaking of parents, one of our very generous parents, whose students are in the class of 2021, has hired three game trucks for our juniors to enjoy on Thursday, October 24th, from 2:45 to 4:45. Aside from promoting a positive culture and climate on campus, it will be used as an incentive for attendance and tie into a kindness challenge for our juniors. Overall, a lot is happening at Renaissance High School for the Arts just in the past two months, and I can't wait to come back in May to tell you everything else we've accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah, for that very thorough and comprehensive report. We much appreciate it. We do have a few more questions that we want to ask, though. You are senior.
I'm actually a junior.
Oh, you're a junior?
Yes.
Okay, well, maybe it's too early to ask a question, but perhaps you're already thinking about a college that you plan to attend or a major that you're planning to pursue?
Um, I'm planning on attending LBCC on the Long Beach Promise. I hope to definitely figure out what major I want to pursue there, as of right now, even though I go to an art school, I actually want to pursue engineering because I love math as well.
Very good.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Keep keeping us posted on your principals doing the next year.
That's right.
We're going to start on this end this time, starting with Ms. Craighead.
Are you afraid you're going to forget about me over here?
Like I did last time.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm going to try and remember because we had set aside our reports from the last meeting because we were hurrying off to back-to-school night. So I will rely on my notes. I'm going to start with an event at Oropesa. We had a visit from Billie Jean King and the Dodger Foundation, and they donated books to all of our fifth-grade students, so we had the fifth graders from Oropesa and, was it Edison, that came to Oropesa and received those books. It was a lovely ceremony. Billie Jean King chose a couple of audience members, a couple of our fifth graders, to sit and read parts of the book with her. I think she was requested to read parts of the book, and she had the students read it, and I just think what a wonderful memory these students have of sitting next to Billie Jean King, reading the story of her life. She was very inspirational. She encouraged the students to be lifelong learners, which I thought was great because she just has this wonderful energy about her. She's a very youthful energy. Let's see. And she was in town because the next day was the... And she was in town because the next day was the grand opening for the library named in her honor downtown. And that one featured the poly band because she is a poly alum. Okay, so that was a lot of fun. Plus, they provided Dodger shirts for everybody, so everybody was in Dodger blue. It was a beautiful thing. Then, let's see, there's a Lakewood Celebrates event. The city of Lakewood has an occasional event where they call it Lakewood Celebrates, and sometimes they honor volunteers or they honor first responders, and they always welcome new city employees and new community members. So our Gompers principal, Dr. Miller, was welcomed and introduced to the community. I think that's such a nice kind of a, you know, small-town event, and it's a nice gesture overall. And then at Rogers, the Rogers Green Team had a paper shredding and e-waste drive on a Saturday led by Mrs. Weinstein, who's been here, and the group has presented to the board. I happen to be the 200th client or dropper offer of things, paper to be shredded, and I got a reusable straw and the coordinating cleaner, which I think is very important. So I, because, I mean, it's one thing to have this thing, but you really have to have the cleaner, I feel like, in order, I'm going to use it, and it came with a bag, too. Anyhow.
Otherwise, you can't reuse it, right?
I can't reuse it. If I can't clean it, I can't reuse it. That's just me. So thank you to the Green Team from Rogers and Ms. Weinstein for giving up a Saturday morning and taking care of that. More recently, this last weekend, there were a lot of events. The Arts Council and the city of Long Beach partnered to hold the annual state-of-the-art event. It was held at the Scottish Rite in the Ernest Borgnine Theater, which is upstairs. If you haven't been, it's gorgeous. It's really neat. And our, one of our Emerson parent volunteers was honored. She's been presenting an arts program to the students at Emerson, training parents and presenting for the last three years. So congratulations to Stephanie Rysich for her Arts Council honor. They also honored the Roomba Foundation for its help with our school district to the tune of over $750,000. They've contributed, I know, to our school district. Part of the money provides transportation for our kids to the symphony, and they're looking forward to donating even more money in the future. So I think it's worth, you know, thanking them publicly. Roomba Foundation, that's incredible. We all benefit from that. And then, lastly, the campfire organization had an event Saturday night, I believe it was, to honor Shirley Jackard, who is retiring after 35 years of extraordinary service to the community. So I just want to say congratulations, Shirley, and thank you for your contributions.
Thank you, Diana. Mr. Meyer.
As I visit my schools, I want to thank all of our staff for the wonderful opening that they've had. There's really a great upbeat spirit going on on all of our school campuses. I do want to apologize, I've not been to my schools on Avalon, in Avalon on Catalina Island. I'll get through this next week or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Dr. Benitez.
Yes, we had the opportunity, a few of us, to attend Judy Seal's retirement/advancement celebration, which was wonderful. Board member Kerr did an awesome job emceeing for the night, so just our appreciation again for Judy and all the work that she's done for our district and our students. I also want to take this opportunity to express my appreciation, deep appreciation, for everyone that comes out during public comment for our board meetings. I mean, it's great for folks to reach out individually to us, but I think it's super important to use this space, use this time to hold our elected officials accountable, right, and to help inform our decision-making. So we know it takes some time, we know it's not at the best time of the day, we know we're not as accessible for many folks, so to those folks that do have an opportunity to make it out, just, you know, deep appreciation for the public comment period, both for items that are on the agenda and for those that are not. So thank you. Keep doing that, keep reaching out to us, and keep showing up to our school board meetings. I think, related to that, it's also important to reaffirm to our students in particular, but to parents and community members, to pay attention to what's going on at our state legislator as well and nationally, because those decisions, policies, have impacts on what we do here on a day-to-day basis. So whether that's changing start times for our schools, being able to take the SAT test for free in our district, to national decisions that impact our Title I funds for districts like Long Beach, we should keep paying attention to what's going on at the state level and nationally, and what implications that has on the policy considerations that we have, our programs and services, and the budget considerations that we make here in collaboration with you. So as a part of that, I wanted to bring this up at our last board meeting, but I'm going to take some time tonight to talk about the importance of our upcoming US Census 2020. I know Dr. Baker has been working really hard on behalf of our district as part of our city's Complete Count Committee, and those conversations have already been going on, but many of the policy, program, service, budget considerations that we make here on behalf of our community members as a board are based on the US Census, right? And there's three sort of areas as to why this census is so important and why we should be paying more attention to this upcoming 2020 US Census on April 1st is census date. One is, it's the law. We've been doing the census in this country since 1790. It's required by our Constitution for us to count every single person in our country, irrespective of background, irrespective of immigration experience. Everyone should be counted by law. And there are many folks in our communities that don't trust how the census data, one is collected, but then what we do with that census data. So there's an opportunity here for us to help educate our community about how important it is that everyone, every single individual, should be counted, but particularly what are referred to as hard-to-count populations, HTC, hard-to-count population, which includes children zero to five, it includes our low-income communities, it includes communities of color, seniors, our LGBTQ community members. There's a whole list of folks that are really hard to count. LA County is the hardest-to-count county in our country. Long Beach reflects many of the reasons why our county is very difficult to count because we have large percentages of very hard-to-count populations. So I know we're going to be having more information about this, Dr. Baker, about the role that we can play as a district, about the roles that our schools can serve to both help communicate, educate, as a trusted messenger, our community members, but also when it comes to census date, to actually help folks go online or fill out the paper copy of the census. So by law, we have to do it. Secondly, our congressional districts are based on the census count. California will have to December of next year to tell the federal government what our population is, and based on that, we draw up our congressional districts. So if anyone's keeping their eye on our national debates here, this represents political power and political representation for the communities, specifically of California, but in our nation, and that those districts are based on, we're going to have a redistricting commission work with those numbers, our census, right? So if we want to talk empowerment, political power, this is one way to uphold our political power, to make sure that we are counted, and that make sure that that is reflected in our congressional districts, and to then to make sure that we are represented based on those congressional districts. And then lastly, and it's not least in matter of importance, but bottom line for us is, our school districts have probably more impact on the day-to-day lives of our individual families and students than the national sort of policymaking apparatus. So our budget, policy, programs, and service considerations are also based on US Census data. So I urge our community members, I urge our school site staff, teachers, volunteers, as well as our team up here, to keep highlighting the importance of this UN Census and for us to take this opportunity, because it won't happen for another 10 years, to really change the lives of a whole generation of students and community members. So I'll end with that.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Ms. Kerr.
Yes, thank you. Some of these events have already been mentioned, so I'll just touch briefly on them. The Billie Jean King and Dodger Foundation event obviously was a great day, as was the library opening. The Los Cerritos students led the Pledge of Allegiance, Hughes presented the colors, and Polly obviously played. Those were her three, the three schools that she attended here in Long Beach. And when you listen to her speak, and I was got to go to an event beforehand, how much she credits what this city and what this school district and what the programs in this city meant for her and for her, for her family, and that she wouldn't be where she is in life had she not been part of Long Beach. So it's always humbling to hear that from someone who received the Presidential Medal of Freedom. So it reminds us that there are great ones among us and in our schools now, and I cannot wait to hear what they're doing. And I think the Student Board Report always reminds me of that. Being on campuses always reminds me of that. So it was a great day for our kids to see someone who has attained so much and isn't finished, come from the same neighborhoods and play on the same courts that they played on. So it was a great event. And also the library opening. If you have not been to the new library downtown, you need to go. Watching what happened to the community of North Long Beach and how it was transformed by the opening of the Michelle Obama Library. It's an incredible tool and space that did transformation and continues to do transformational work in a part of town that didn't often experience that. And so I look forward to our students who go to Oropesa and who go to Chavez and Edison to have such a beautiful space to learn and to play and to grow and to explore, and there's tremendous, tremendous opportunities. So check it out. The library folks are on all of the media platforms so that you can find out author signings and Makerspace nights, and they actually have a whole section of craft projects. So if you have a craft project or some project for school and you don't have the supplies, and I have made many, a Michael's Run at 8:30 the night before our project was done over the course of my 17 years as a parent, but to know that there is a space that will provide that for our families is incredible. So take full advantage of that. I want to thank the Hamilton community for Family Welcome Day. The Jordan Drumline and dancers came. We had representatives from the Police Department, from our all-in campaign, from our, from our Marine Safety Officers. So thank you for welcoming our students, and again, some of these took place a while ago. Ms. Worsham and her staff, I had a great visit at Hart Elementary School two weeks ago and then went to go again last week for their weekly assembly where they participate in a cultural exchange program, and they were the recipient of 1,000 paper cranes that were put together in the pattern of the American flag. And they received two, and only seven were made. Only seven were made. And so it is beautiful, and I highly recommend you go visit it at Hart. They start that assembly on a Tuesday morning with dancing. I love it. They just turn the song on the kids know. So thank you for welcoming me, Hart families. Back-to-school night, obviously, thank you to staff who put up with us running in a little bit late because of a board meeting. And I want to thank the CAC Committee for Special Education for their playdate that they hosted at the inclusive playground. And I see John Schultz out there, and I know what he would have said, and it would have been about open space, and it would have been about opportunity. But when I visited, there were at least 30 students and their families enjoying that space together, laughing, playing, sharing community, standing there, you know, parents talking over coffee, and it was a joyful event to be a part of, so it was great to see Dr. Brown there. I think I missed Superintendent Steinhauser by just a little bit. But thank you to the CAC for providing not only training and opportunities for supporting student success in the classroom, but also building community. And I'll leave it there. Thank you so much. Oh, actually, I do want to say, and I didn't even know what Dr. Benitez was going to say, but I was very, I'm very aware, every time I sit, have the honor to sit here and serve people, serve the public. What we do is so important. What comes before us every time is important. And I know that folks don't often pay attention to a school board meeting, folks don't often understand that we are an independently-elected body and we set the policy for the school district, and sometimes that's because it's going really well. And often, when people come to us, it isn't always for a good reason. It's because what happens in classrooms affects families in a profound way. I know it is what brought me to my first school board meeting probably 10 years ago now, as a parent concerned about my students. So as I listen to what's brought before us, not only in the agendized items and that I prepare with before I come, but what, what comes before us here is deeply important work, and I just wanted to reassure folks listening and watching that I understand how much it matters to you. I understand how much it matters to your family specifically because I know how much it matters to mine. So I, I would say I could probably speak on behalf of my colleagues that we listen to all of it and we take it in and we really understand, and Dr. Williams and Mr. Meyer have been doing this work for so long, and the impact that the policies that they have set forth have impacted generations of families. So thank you for bringing it to us, but know that I and we, I think, take it all very, very seriously, and we know that it matters. So thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr, for those very nice words. I want to just add to the comment about Judy Seal, and I know that Judy is in the room. But over the long association that we've had, Judy, going back some 30-something years or pretty close to that, it's been an amazing relationship, and to be able to work with you through all of that and all the things that we have been able to work on together. And let me just commend your son, Sean, for the wonderful job he did introducing his mom at the, at the event. We watched Sean grow up here as well, and all the work that you've done to get him. I went to his graduation, right, Sean? And you came to my house and picked peaches off my tree, right? But again, when we talk about the legacy of Judy Seal, it's a special legacy, Judy, an eventful legacy with all the things that you've done, not only to promote the, this district, its students, but how impactful that has been to the city and the community. I can't speak enough about the impact that you've made over all these years. And we know that as you plan to leave in a few days, someone said you haven't even turned in your paperwork yet, so we'll have to wait and see when you really plan on leaving. But we know that the district is not going to let you go too far. We're going to somehow get you back here to continue working, and again, you've done a lot to impact this district, its students, and this community, and we, we want to wish you the best, Judy. Nobody's ever stopped you before, right?
I don't think I've ever spoken on this microphone before. Megan and Juan, Dr. Williams, John Meyer, and Diana, I am so proud to be able to work with you and have access to you and be able to be part of all of the things that you believe in. Of course, I've known Chris for a very long time, and thank you. I wanted to say that, thank you, Chris. I had a few things I wanted to do as a professional, one was I wanted homeless students to be able to go to public school. And so we managed to do that and get that through in 1991. And I wanted kids to be able to go to college. I wanted all the barriers removed that were in front of them, and so now we have the College Promise. I, I did get some surprises, and... I, I did get some surprises, and, like the Education Foundation, and it has been such a joy. Chris asked me to do that in 1992, right before the winter holiday, and we didn't have very much money in it, maybe, I think 11,000 is what the legend says, and now we're at 2.5 million, and we've brought in so much more since. A lot of that is because you allow and encourage our employees and others to invest in Long Beach and find. I also enjoyed Principal Ford Day. I just want to say that, because that was, because I just, you know, walked into a room and, and then I got it, but I was really excited, and we managed to really have an outreach agenda for our community to be there, be available. And to all executive staff, you guys are awesome. I live around the corner from Chris, so he'll be walking past, and I'm always here for you guys. Thank you. Thanks for all the time.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you very much. I want to just spend a few minutes talking about this, because this is very important to me. Quite some time ago, a few years back, the HR office did a report on staffing in the district, and in that staffing report, one of the things that stood out was the very low numbers of African-American male teachers in K through 5th grade. And I just basically raised that issue with the superintendent, and in that discussion, what we learned was that in our recruiting, the African-American males were not enrolling in teaching programs. That even extended to sending David and some of our, our teams out to HBCUs to see if we can enhance the recruitment of that population. And it was for a reason that we raised that issue, based on research that I had looked at and reviewed. What we decided to do was to grow our own and establish a partnership with the College of Education at Cal State University, Long Beach, and that program has been working over time to develop a structure to recruit students, to bring in funding for that program and so forth, and we just had the first graduating class from that program. It's now called the Isabel Patterson Scholars, and, and it was named after Isabel Patterson, and basically as one of the, uh, she's a teacher for urban school projects for students enrolled in teacher education programs at Cal State Long Beach. A little bit about her background, the first African-American woman to earn a bachelor's degree from an established four-year college in the United States, a daughter of fugitive slaves. Patterson became a teacher at the age of 22 in Philadelphia, and she had become principal of the nation's first public high school for black students. And so this particular program is being named in her honor. There are a total of seven recipients, students who had graduated, five females, three of those were African-American, two males, one was Asian, the other was Caucasian. And just to be able to remind people of the very purposeful need for which we had advocated for this program, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of the process that has been put in place, a true partnership to bring about these results, and it's very impressive with the work that has been done and the people that have been involved in it. And let me just say very quickly to David Zaid, who is part of that process, and David, for your work in bringing in scholarship money to start that program, it was very special. But here's the language that we, we discussed in looking at the need. There are a few African-American males in this country who have not been hit by issues of race in one way or another. There are some who have been more impacted than others, but the net effect is that they have all experienced issues involving race. Given that experience, they are in a unique, unique position to understand and empathize with African-American male students and the daily struggles these students face, and the net effect of these challenges on student learning. According to a report by the State of Teacher Diversity in American Education, minority teachers can be more motivated to work with disadvantaged minority students in high poverty, racially and ethnically segregated schools, a factor which may help to reduce rates of teacher attrition in hard-to-staff schools. Minority teachers tend to have higher academic expectations for minority students, which can result in increased academic and social growth among students. Minority students profit from having among their teachers individuals from their own racial and ethnic group who can serve an academically successful role model, and who can have greater knowledge on, of their heritage and culture. And one of the, some of the comments that we heard from these graduates was just that, the fact that there are role models that, that inspired them to achieve academic excellence as students. Positive exposure to individuals from a variety of races and ethnic groups, especially in childhood, can help to reduce stereotypes, attenuate unconscious implicit biases, and help promote cross-cultural social bonding. A study conducted by Hanushek et al. in 2005 found that African-American teachers were significantly more successful than white teachers in improving the reading and vocabulary scores of black students. In another study, Caldwell, 2005, found that test scores gains in math were significantly higher for Hispanic students taught by Hispanic teachers than for similar students taught by teachers of different ethnic backgrounds. While gains for black students paired with black teachers, though weaker, were also positive. The report goes on to cite the progress school districts have and continue to make in hiring minority teachers. It also notes the companion problem of retaining those teachers. So again, while I applaud what is happening right now in terms of reaching out and trying to grow our own, our true objective was being able to bring in African-American male teachers in those lower grades. And as we move forward in this process, as we begin this second round of, of finding and locating individuals who will fill these roles, I hope that we can hone in on truly bringing in the intended population of teachers to address some of the intractable problems that we have with some of our African-American male students. The other thing is the, the presence of Billie Jean King, and when I had a chance to just chat with her, one of the questions she asked me was about my work here in the district. How did I feel about my work here in the district? And my, my response to her was, our work here is very critical and is very important, and the fact that she's tuned in to what we're doing was very encouraging. And that is my report.
Mr. Superintendent. No report. Okay, announcements. I have some announcements. Is Operation School Bill happening this weekend?
This weekend.
Okay. At Roosevelt High School?
Elementary.
Roosevelt, who? How did I get to Roosevelt Elementary School? Operation School Bill at 9:00 AM. Be handing out uniforms to students at Roosevelt High School. I want to say high school for some minute. Forgive me, folks. Roosevelt Elementary School. I didn't know it was transformed to a high school either. Matt Jenkins Memorial is this Saturday at Cornerstone Church at 11:00. And is High School Choice?
High School Choice.
High School Choice Fair is this Saturday as well at Cabrillo. Okay.
One announcement for me, Dr. Williams. So, AOC 7 Franklin Middle School are doing a community cleanup this Saturday, 9:00 AM. Anyone that wants to come help out and do some community building and meet some neighbors will be there this Saturday morning.
Will entertain a motion for adjournment?
Dr. Williams, don't forget also, there's a memorial service for Dr. Matt Jenkins at 11:00 AM, Saturday, the 19th. And he's done so much for a meth collaborative, as you know.
For all of our students and all of our schools. Thanks, Matt. Again, Judy, happy trails to you as you move along. We are now adjourned.